Issue, so she will be not in attendance today. As a result, I will be calling the meeting to order and entertaining a motion to appoint an individual as chairperson pro tem for the meeting. We have our closed session starting here at 5:30. We have a presentation occurring directly after that about roads. And then we have our regular board meeting at seven. We, per our rules, appoint the, I believe, the treasurer as chairperson pro tem. So I would, at this moment, entertain a motion to appoint Treasurer Slavens as chair pro tem for the remainder of the meeting. Is there a motion to do that?
Still moved.
All right.
Support.
It has been moved by trustee Borninski, and it has been supported by trustee Snyderman to appoint Treasurer Slavens as chair pro tem for the remainder of the meeting. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, the ayes have it. Madam Treasurer or Madam Chair Pro Tem, I give you the microphone.
To Clerk Segrist, and if you could please take roll call.
Borninski.
Good evening.
Foster.
Good evening.
Let the record reflect trustee Ganguly is not in attendance. Let the record reflect that Clerk Segrist is in attendance. Slavens.
Good evening.
And Snyderman.
I am present.
And could I please have a motion to go into closed session?
Madam Chair Pro Tem, I move that the board go into closed session under a roll call vote for the purpose of discussing pending litigation settlement strategy in the case of Charter Township of Canton v. IMAC Properties LLC, Daniel McClosland and Robert McClosland.
Support.
All right. Borninski.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Segrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Madam Chair, we are in closed session. Still moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Next, we have a presentation, major road improvement program review. Charles.
Good evening, members of the board. And tonight is our presentation. Like three or four meetings ago, you asked for an update on the roads millage program. So we have that, an update. Also, we have a, we need some support on the decision of how, what we're going to do next year. So I'm bringing you a presentation plus. But I'm, Charles is going to be handling this tonight. He put a lot of time into this, and I think the information is pretty good. We'll answer any questions you have, but I'm going to turn it over to Charles to run through it. Thank you.
Good evening again. Thank you. For those who don't know me, I'm Charles LaRocque. I'm the engineering supervisor and acting engineering manager. I'm going to get this little presentation started here, and then we'll go through what we're hoping to do for the future, and of course, take any questions. Tell me if this is too loud or not loud enough. In 2018, Canton voters approved a 20-year millage targeted for road improvement projects. Each year, the millage generates $5.6 million that is used to fund the Canton Road Improvement Program. The intent of this program is to provide year-to-year flexibility to match millage revenues with a list of prioritized projects. Fifty-five percent of funds generated are used for the major road improvement program. Thirty percent is used for the residential road improvement program, and 15% is paid annually to MDOT for the future construction of the Ford Road Boulevard. Now, in its fifth year, the road improvement program has already completed 25 major road projects and 81 local subdivision projects. Let's take a look at some of the significant highlights. In 2019, $3.3 million of millage funds were used on the following major road projects. Concrete repair and reconstruction work was done on Salts and Hanford Roads from Beck to Hagerty. Morton Taylor Road had base repairs and overlay just north of Warren. Lots Road was reconstructed and repaired between Palmer and Cherry Hill Roads. Panel replacement and repairs were also completed north of Ford Road. Pavement on the south leg of Beck and Cherry Hill intersection was repaired. Pavement repairs were done on Beck Road south of Geddes. Repair and reconstruction were done on Lily from Ford to Cherry Hill, and pavement rehabilitation and repairs were made to Canton Center south of Ford. In 2020, $1.6 million was used to fund repair of the entire Canton Center and Warren Road intersection, as well as the base repair on Hagerty Road between Hanford and Warren, as well as Palmer and Michigan Ave. In 2021, $2.1 million was used to fund the rehabilitation and repair of Canton Center and Sheldon from Cherry Hill to Ford Road. Repair work was also done on Hagerty from Michigan Ave to Van Born. In 2022, $6.1 million was used to fund base repairs and resurfacing on Warren Road from Hagerty to Lily. It also funded the full reconstruction of the north and southbound lanes on Canton Center from Ford to Warren, making it the first five-lane replacement project Canton has ever done. The impetus for that project began back in 2001, when this section of Canton Center was newly reconstructed as a five-lane concrete roadway by the Wayne County Department of Public Services. Over the past two decades, as this roadway aged, signs of distress failure have occurred, prompting the need for repairs. Over the last decade, Canton received numerous resident complaints about the condition of this road, and in 2017, a Click on Detroit survey named it the worst road for potholes in southeast Michigan. Due to budget constraints, the original plan could only replace half the road and patch the remaining half. However, Canton's administration, led by the township supervisor Anne Marie Graham Hudak, was able to secure necessary additional funding from Wayne County and the state of Michigan to pay for a full five-lane replacement reconstruction of Canton Center Road.
This is the first five-lane replacement project that Canton has ever done. The full concrete reconstruction of both the northbound and southbound lanes from Ford Road to Warren Road began in mid-April, and it's the largest project in Canton so far.
In 2023, $1.6 million was used to fund replacement of all pavement on Lots and Lily Roads between Michigan Avenue and Palmer. Sheldon Road was also milled and resurfaced with asphalt from Warren Road to Sheldon Center. In addition to all the substantial progress made on major roads throughout the township, to date, 81 projects were also completed by 39 different subdivisions as part of the residential road improvement program through a local match by residents. This program only targets subdivision roads under the jurisdiction of Wayne County. Improvements to these roads are funded by a combination of millage funds and matching funds from homeowner groups. Applications for this program are submitted by HOAs and homeowner groups on a rolling basis year-round. In the last five years, $8 million has been used to fund a variety of residential road improvement program projects in subdivisions such as Brookside, Century Farms, Fairways West, Glengarry, and Meadowbrook. Many of the HOAs and homeowner groups who participate in the residential road improvement program have multi-year projects currently underway. For example, Franklin Palmer Estates is in the process of rehabilitating Proctor Road. Proctor serves as a main artery to the subdivision, and over time, it has shown severe deterioration. Work was done on this road in 2023, with more work planned for 2024. In the last five years, over 40 miles of roads have been improved throughout the community from the major road improvement program alone, but we're not done yet. Canton's Engineering Services Division is already working with the Board of Trustees and the Citizens Road Advisory Group to plan projects for the next five years. Future projects include, but are not limited to, reconstruction of Sheldon Road south of Michigan Ave, improvements to the intersection at Ford and Beck, as well as Sheldon and Palmer, and asphalt pavement replacement along Geddes and Beck Roads. For more information on Canton's road improvement program, including a list of current and past projects, please visit canton-mi.org/roads. And as always, if you have any questions, please call Engineering Services at 734-394-5150. That was our little bit of a history of the millage program. Credit to you folks for being the impetus for getting that passed. It's, I think, very valuable to the community. It's a great way for us to get a lot of work done that otherwise absolutely would not get done. So everyone in Canton deserves a big thanks for that. Quickly, I want to thank Keith and Cable and Amy Hamilton and MSD for helping me put that video together. They both did a great job. I was just the talent, so I... Again, I'm Charles. I'm the engineering supervisor. We're here today to talk about the future of the major road improvement program. As you can see, we have about $3 million each year to work with. We're in the fortunate position of having about five projects nearly ready to go, and need to prioritize those. Realized we can't do them all at once. Realistically, each one will probably take an entire budget and a year of construction to complete, so we wanted to talk to you folks today to get your approval of, you know, the order of the way we approach these next few years. As we talked about in the video, Sheldon Road, south of Michigan Ave, is an absolute disaster. You can barely drive the speed limit. It serves our public works, a lot of industrial, some residential, and obviously runs right up to Michigan Ave. This shot right here, I believe, is right as you approach Michigan Ave. We are pretty much done designing it, very close, very ready to, almost ready to get permitting taken care of. Our construction cost estimate is about $4.1 million. That includes full replacement and rebuild, some stormwater and drainage upgrades. And if you're familiar, there's a few dirt roads that run off of it that, over the years, I've experienced calls with them struggling to drain those roads. So we're going to try and provide some stormwater access, so in the future, if we can even get the county to install some storm down those roads, maybe they can tie into it. As we all know, we also started our intersection evaluation a couple of years ago. One of the main candidates is Sheldon and Palmer Road, currently a four-way stop, very congested during rush hour, essentially probably a failing level of service. We do have the capacity to pretty, say easily, but pretty easily install a roundabout here. That was one of a few options our consultant evaluated, and it did present as probably the most effective. So that is, that is the goal we're working towards as far as designing a roundabout. Right now, construction costs, if it were to happen next year, would be a bit over $2 million. We don't need really any right-of-way. I think the only piece of right-of-way we need is from us at the park, so that should be pretty simple. That would probably be ready to be permitted in that bid at the end of next year. The section of Beck Road from Cherry Hill to Geddes is asphalt, needs a complete mill and resurface. Obviously, the associated base repairs would be completed as well. That design is approaching completion. We're estimating that leg at about $2.7 million, which includes resurfacing Newton Road, if you're familiar with it. Not really a major road, but there's not, also not a subdivision that is going to probably take responsibility, so to speak, for getting it paved. So we thought, well, $2.7 million would probably cost us a few hundred thousand to resurface it, so why don't we just throw that in there as well? Now Beck, Cherry Hill to Geddes sort of is, I'm trying to have it work sort of together with Geddes Road from Canton Center to Beck. Same situation, asphalt road, needs a complete inlay, any base repairs. The really interesting piece for me about this, these two, is we want to also take the intersection of Beck and Geddes and add the three missing right-turn lanes. One leg right now has a right-turn lane, the other three do not. So it's actually a pretty simple fix. We have some utility poles that need to move, but the right-of-way is available, so we thought, you know, hey, why not improve the capacity of that intersection while we're at it? Beck and Ford was the other major intersection that we've been studying, very complicated intersection here with the bridge, the drain, limited right-of-way, very congested during rush hour as well. Right now, the design and the evaluation is pointing us towards right-turn lanes for both north and southbound traffic. I know we've also mentioned dedicated phasing for left-turn lanes, something we're also, we're still, we continue to look at. That design is almost halfway done. We would anticipate that also being ready for construction in, probably not any earlier than 2025. So, as we said, Sheldon Road is likely the priority. It's a complete Level 0 or 1 Pazer rating, failure, can't drive the speed limit, does serve our DPW, which is vital, need to be able to get them in and out of there, like I said, as well as some industrial and residential residents as well. As I said, Sheldon and Palmer will likely be a roundabout. Ford and Beck will be some lane improvements and lane widening to give more room for right turns, so that those folks trying to turn right or go through are not held up by folks turning left. That's, that's kind of the problem there on Beck. Both of those...
Does it include a left-turn signal, north and south? Or is that not for us to say?
It's certainly for us to look at and in design. We have been, and I know last time we met, that was brought up, and we brought that back to the consultant to take another look at. For a four-way intersection, it's, you get an incredible amount of data when studying the, the traffic movements, and, I mean, you have a state highway, so it's, it's really difficult to really get everything perfect, so to speak. So you're kind of balancing, make this better, make this worse. There's a lot involved, but we are still looking at it. As I said, Beck Road, Geddes Road, and their intersection is kind of one big project, but would probably take, you know, two years to complete. Like I said, kind of the neat part is adding those turn lanes at the intersection itself, so that, you know, we have some more volume there, and then getting the better driving, driving surface on both roads. So, from MSD and engineering, I wanted to bring you some recommendations of how I would see this kind of playing out over the next five years. So it's total of five large projects, could likely only accomplish one each year due to the budget constraints. Depending on how it works, you know, we may mix, mix next year's into a current year, so to speak. So kind of the way I'm looking at it is Sheldon Road construction in 2024, south of Michigan Ave. 2025 would be the Sheldon-Palmer roundabout, and I think we could also do a phase of the Beck, Beck Road, Geddes Road, and their associated intersection as well. Ideally, I would love to do the roundabout and do the right-turn lanes at Beck and Geddes in 2025. That way, in 2026, we just resurfaced Beck and Geddes and Newton, and then 2027 is when we would tackle Ford Road and Beck Road intersection. So that's one through four, but it is kind of five projects. So that's kind of, that's my recommendations in MSD and discussing it with the other engineers and our consultants. But again, we wanted to come here tonight to make sure you folks were on board with that, or had other ideas or desires, you know, before we got too far down the road with any of it. So at that, I'll leave it open to questions, and any discussions that you'd like to have, or questions for me or anybody else.
Questions?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for the beautiful video and all of the information. It's really cool to like contextualize the work that's occurred up to this point, see it all laid out, understand the money associated, the actual projects themselves, and then think about it sequentially, about how it, how it's occurred. With regard to the projects that you've brought forward, I notice the Sheldon Road one is probably objectively in the worst shape, but also substantially more expensive than the other ones at $4.1 million, I think it looked like, or something along those lines.
Yeah.
Had there been any discussion about whether or not that would fall under one of the, one of the Wayne County Federal Highway Fund projects? Is that on their radar? My only thought was, being that that's so large, is it possible to follow up, or have you already done this, with the county to see if that's on their radar as one of their major projects? Are they looking at it, and would they be willing to partner on that instead of us biting it all off at once by ourselves?
It certainly makes sense to inquire with them. I, I know it's not on any of their upcoming lists of projects. I would certainly be willing to reach out to them to see if they'd be able to partner with us on it, like you said. I should add, I think, because that one's so much closer to completion as far as design goes, we have an idea of the construction, engineering, and project management costs, so that is included in the 4.1. The other jobs are pretty much mostly construction cost, because we're kind of further out. So, yes, Sheldon Road looks a lot more expensive, but it's probably at the end going to be the similar amount each year, no matter which ones we tackle, which, which one, any of those projects we tackle. But nonetheless, it's obviously worth, worth looking into and speaking with the county to see if it's something they're interested in assisting us with. I know some, it was some years ago, they, they did do, they did that same stretch of Sheldon from, with Van Born to the railroad track, so like the southern piece. I think, I think that's all in Canton, yeah, Van Born. So that's where we're stopping, where they left off. So they obviously have an interest in it, but I don't know, like I said, I don't know that, I don't know that it's on the list of theirs for construction anytime soon. But definitely worth looking into. I mean, we're always trying to ask for, for their financial support.
Thank you. Steven?
Yeah, thank you, and thanks for the report. Is that going to, the video on the website? Will it be on the website?
I know Keith put it on the, on the, it's on YouTube, so I believe it's, it's available publicly.
We should hopefully link to it from our website then, of course.
Yeah, I think we will. I, I, there's a couple edits I was, Amy and I were talking about, but we might make those and then, and get it out, make sure it's out there linked on the website.
Okay. One, one of the, in the video, one of the years had $6 million spent. Was that because we didn't spend it all in like a pandemic year or something like that?
I believe that was a combination of some rollover dollars and the assistance we got from the state to build Canton Center. That's why we were able to spend more that year, yes.
What about Ford Road Boulevard? Any update on, on that? I know this is more our...
No, Ford Road, we meet monthly with MDOT. We just met on Monday with, with their group. They are, they were, what were we talking about? Sheldon and Ford Road pedestrian crossing. We kind of gave them our, our blessing on, on the design we liked, so we could try and get some pedestrians across Ford Road safely, because we know there's a senior community right on the corner there.
You mean like a bridge, or just...
No, no, just, just getting the crosswalk set up so that, in the most effective way we can do it. Not to get on a tangent, the best way would be able to have a, a safety in an island to go halfway. Don't have the right-of-way for that, but, but yeah, MDOT's working towards that. Right now, they're in the right-of-way acquisition process still. They've got the, sort of the final design for all the loons and everything, and the, excuse me, not roundabout, the turnarounds and all that. So they're, now they're back in the process with real estate acquiring that. And we also, I met with them, a large group from MDOT, they did their value engineering study, so they, they have a group that studies at an outside firm that kind of, outside-the-box ideas, and then prints, presents them back. So that was pretty, that was interesting to see, some of the ideas they came up with. There's a couple they're evaluating, evaluating still, so it's moving along. I think they've said their wish would be to do Hagerty first, the boulevarded portion on Hagerty. I don't, I don't see that happening anytime before, construction-wise, and I, there's no way that happens before '25, so that would put Ford Road at '26, but I could see it being '26, '27, no construction.
Trustee Snyder, also, just a little extra note. So as this thing kind of tweaks in design, they are coming back to the public. They're going to have public sessions with the business owners and the public to look at where they're at now. That'll probably be in January is what they're looking at, so just to come back to the public about it.
So early on, 2018, maybe, like you said, you guys did Salts and Hanford, and part of that was in preparation for diversion of traffic during Ford Road?
I know, yeah.
But it sounds like it almost will be 10 years.
Right.
Right? And when I write on Salts and Hanford, the stuff that we fix is good, but new stuff is breaking, right?
Right.
Because, you know, it wasn't a full replacement, it was just patching. So I don't know how you handle that, if you need to take a look at it and see. I don't, not sure how expensive it would be. It's definitely not as much as it was the first time on those two roads, but it's something to be thought about, I think.
Yeah, no, I mean, we're always looking for input on future potential projects, and I think that's in our five-year, well, our previous five-year plan, we're kind of revising it tonight, but, yeah, certainly worthwhile, yeah, like, yeah, we started out with this process of, of trying to get things done around when we thought Ford Road would be taken down, and that just keeps getting pushed back, so at this point, it's kind of like, all right, well, do our best, you know, to work around MDOT.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the work that was done was good, but I don't, I think there's other work to be done there, maybe not in the next year or two, but maybe in year three, that kind of thing.
Certainly.
The Beck and Ford intersection, I live there, and Diane lives there, and so I think my first campaign was 2011, '12, I talked about the Beck and Ford intersection, and so, I mean, people there are being really patient, but I think if there's no, if, if there's not a solution that doesn't include a left turn, at least going, heading south, but also heading north, I mean, you can get one, maybe two cars to turn there, and in the rush hours, it's terrible. And so there needs to be a turn signal there. I mean, I wish it was pushed up, you know, 2026, maybe? I don't know how we can do that.
Good.
But, yeah, I mean, maybe instead of the Phase 2 or something like that, and swap those, but people, people have been suffering there since I moved in 30 years ago. I mean, it was a dirt road for a month when I moved in, right?
Right, right.
So...
So the, the left-turn phasing, I can talk about it for a moment if, if you'd like. We, we certainly have, like I said, we've looked at it, and we have traffic data, and the way that you, you, you collect the current data, and then you project it 20, 30 years in the future, so that you're kind of designing something that will last. Firstly, if you, if we add the right-turn lanes, that's taking a lot of, that's allowing a lot more traffic movement that would otherwise be stuck behind people trying to turn left. So that on, on its own is already assisting. It, it's not making, it's sitting at the light, you're not getting through it any quicker to turning left, but you're also not in line to turn left behind people who are trying to turn right or go straight.
Understand, but most people will like, take the risk of going into the opposing traffic lane when the light hasn't changed just to get into that turning lane. And then if you're not, if, if the first person in line at the turn doesn't pull halfway into the intersection during it, no one's getting through during that rotation.
Which we can, will alleviate with the right-turn lane, so that there won't be that need to try and squirt around people anymore. The other, but the more, I think the more important piece is when we look at the level of service of how it functions, and level of service is pretty straightforward, it's like a school grade, A through F. During peak hours, the whole thing is F, or near, near there. When we add what we think is, is a possible left-turn dedicated phasing, because you have to remember Ford Road's a state highway, right? So that's, those lights are synced up for miles. When we, when we add in what we think is a possible left-turn phasing, it doesn't actually improve the level of service that much. I know it sounds, it's counterintuitive, and I'm not saying we can't or won't do it, but it, it doesn't look like it's really helping a whole lot. It's something we can continue to sort of tweak and look at, and of course, the third piece being... And of course, the third piece being, MDOT would have to allow it, right? It's their, it's their road or their highway.
Right.
But again, we're not, we haven't, we certainly haven't ruled it out. It's certainly not something that we're saying we can't do. But it's, it might, it might come down to something, being something that's, doesn't end up having a great return on investment, so to speak. We probably, you know, put money into redo the signals and then.
Quite honestly, if, I know what your answer will be to this, but if you put in the left turn, not you, but if they put in the left turn signal now just to see how it goes, I think you would see great improvement, even if it would just let three or four cars.
Right.
Turn, because you're not getting three or four cars to turn now. And I know not having the right turn lane and maybe the, whatever the, the turn lane is called that isn't long enough or whatever. But, you know, I, I always understood that argument until I think lots in Ford North and South got turn lanes and they don't have a right turn lane.
Okay, right.
And so you could even probably just delay that, these changes to 2027 if we had the turn signal put in.
I can, I, I go back, I will go back to the consultant and see if it's possible to, to do something like that. Yeah, we, I mean, that's the thing is it would be nice to like, well, let's see if this will work in the real world. I mean, I could stand here all day and tell you that, what the projections are, but you're right. It'd be nice to, to find out for sure. So I, yeah, we can talk about something, I can talk about them.
Last question for the future. At some point, so we're in year six, it's a 20-year millage. There will be a need to extend the millage in some form or fashion to keep maintaining our roads. Do we have any vision of what, you know, we, we need to do once we've sort of fixed all the roads?
Well, it's a 20-year millage, so like you said, referencing Salts and Hanford, we're going to get to a point where we're going to go back and do some that we fixed, right? Preventive maintenance is something that, it's every year, it's a goal of ours. And, you know, I think we just get bogged down with these major jobs that it's hard to get out there, but it's something that's worthwhile to do. So, yeah, I mean, I, I hope I'm here. I plan to be here when the millage expires, so I'd like to see if, it may not be continued at the, the same number of mills, right? We wouldn't, maybe we don't need as much money, but it's certainly worthwhile, you know, to keep something like that going, to keep maintaining the roads. Because yeah, if we don't, then 40 years, we'll be back where we started.
Right, yeah, I mean, we, we went 40 years or whatever.
Right, right.
So now that we've done it, maybe it's half as much or something just to, because we will have to replace these roads someday.
Right.
That we're doing, so.
I was just talking the other day, our consultant that did the Pazer rating for us is going to provide a proposal to do it again in '24, which is kind of exciting to see because we'll get a chance to really see the data that shows how much we've improved the overall Pazer rating in the, in the community. So that, that's something to look forward to.
Have them do it after you fix Sheldon Road at a zero.
Yeah, yeah. I hope we, yeah, I hope we do. Assume, you know, if that stays number one and we start building it next year, then we'll just tell them, just make that one a nine. It'll be there eventually, you know, that way we keep our average up. Yeah, thanks.
Eight?
Thank you. I am total, I'm totally in agreement with trustee Snyderman. I don't live near Ford and Beck as, at least not as near as he and Diane do, but I, you know, if we're putting that off to 2027, which I would love to see that be sooner, then I do think we need to explore the, the left turn signal going north and south.
Yeah, I, I think it's a great idea. I, I can't.
And I do wonder if there's any safety data also because it's scary trying to, I will, I take Ford Road out to Ann Arbor a lot and making that left coming from the south is scary. And then coming back, turning right to go south on Beck, there's no visibility from the, the cars that are going south on Beck from north of Ford that, that intersection. I, I totally agree needs something. I'm glad to hear about the right turn lanes at Beck and Geddes because, yes, I drive there quite frequently also. And Sheldon Road, South Michigan Avenue being it is a one or a zero is awful and totally agree with that being a priority. I was wondering, since we talked about doing some of Geddes, I was wondering if there's any update on the Sheldon, Michigan Avenue Geddes intersection.
Yeah, we've, we've been focusing on Sheldon Palmer and Beck and Ford. As you know, that, that intersection is unique.
A challenge?
Challenge, yeah. I was, I was, I was, when we met last time, I was surprised at the feedback a little bit. Like you guys, you guys had some great points and great ideas and it's, which is why we do this, because it's things that we aren't thinking about. But we, it's still in the, in the hopper and in the works, and we still have consultant on board looking at it. I'm just trying, it kind of got put third, in third place, you know, while we're trying to get these other two, you know, rolling. But it's, it's still on the radar for sure. It's something that we want to address, you know, someday. I know Henry had sent me some information about reaching out to, oh, working with SEMCOG on it. They had some data, things like that, so. Yeah, it's a fun one to look at, that's for sure. There's, there's all kinds of ideas that we come up with, all kinds of good stuff we could do. Going to say one other thing about, oh, I mean, I like the idea of if, if, honestly, I don't know if we can do this, but I like the idea of testing out a left turn signal at Ford and Beck. So if, if maybe we figure out a way to do that and leave it at like number four. Conversely, Sheldon, Sheldon Palmer intersection, Ford and Beck intersection are kind of, construction wise, can go wherever between two and four or three, you know. Well, I'm sorry, or one, but nonetheless, they're both at the same point. So I mean, I just, I put Sheldon Palmer number two, I just assumed there'd be a whole lot of excitement over a roundabout. Not that there isn't, but if we're really concerned about Ford and Beck, by all means, it can be switched around and that can be more of a priority. It sounds like.
Do we have data on traffic counts? Because to me, the, I, I would be, I guess, more in favor of an intersection that had more traffic that it did getting fixed sooner.
Sure, I mean.
Like I'll do respect to the Beck Road folks. There's a lot of people over there, and I would also say that perhaps some of the reason that traffic counts wouldn't be high is because it's a four-way stop. And people would intend, a substantial amount of residents in Canton Township in a very dense area are going miles out of the way to avoid a four-way stop in the middle of a school day, middle of rush hour traffic. That intersection is a critical failure in an area where 15,000 to 20,000 residents live within a, a square mile radius of it, worse than.
I didn't, I didn't mean, I didn't mean Ford and Beck as opposed to Sheldon and Palmer. I meant more Beck and Geddes.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, the Beck Geddes intersection piece, isn't this, it, yeah, we're not viewing it as a, a full intersection overhaul like the other two, I think. It was more of a, sort of an opportunity of, you know, coming together of what we were already doing. But like I said, I mean, and that's why we're here tonight. Any of these, this four can almost go in any order. I don't think we would be, I don't, we, we wouldn't really be ready for construction on either of the big intersections next year. So that one sort of mitigating factor, any of them can go anywhere, which is kind of why I threw Sheldon Road for next year. Then by the time that's done, we're ready to, or basically, once Sheldon Road is done next year, we're almost ready to build any of the other three or four, however you look at it. Or you count Beck and Geddes. They're all at a place where they're not quite ready for bidding in the next couple of months, but they will be in 12 months, you know.
Not, not understanding how the work involved for either solution. Is there a, a path where at Palmer and Sheldon, we put a light until we can get to a roundabout? Or is that not, not doable at all? I mean, it seems like a pretty simple intersection. I mean, we put a light at Ridge and Denton, and there's always plans to change that to a roundabout, but.
The reason there's no light at that intersection, because that, that was always, when we had the intersection improvement back in the early, in the 2010s, that was the next intersection that would have been done. They did not do it because in order to put a light, you have to enclose the drain. Enclosing the drain was over a million to $2 million.
Oh, so you can't do, simply do a light there?
Yeah, you can't. The roundabout lets you get around the drain issue, I think. So we're making the $2 million improvement on the roundabout. If you want to put in a light, you got to enclose the drain next to the monastery school.
No, I didn't, I didn't know.
Roundabout's flow traffic better too, don't they?
Summer?
Oh, I, I would like to get.
I think Summer has a question.
Thank you. First, I want to say I love the video. I think the video should go everywhere. I think it's good for people to see visually in one place, all of the improvements that have been made to the road network. I think a lot of people forget, even though we are drowning in yellow, in orange barrels a lot of times. I also want to say I'm glad to see that we're tackling the Sheldon Road project. I have driven down that road several times and it is a disaster. And so I'm glad to see that that is number one on the list. I have waited 20 minutes in the, at the Sheldon Palmer intersection sometimes during rush hour traffic. It gets pretty bad. I've been a proponent of having roundabouts in our communities since I was on the Roads Task Force, and I think it makes a ton of sense to do it there. I would love to see how we figure out the Sheldon Geddes, Michigan Avenue intersection area. So, I mean, and I understand if we can't prioritize that over the next four years or so, but I would love to see how we can move that forward.
I agree.
Thank you.
Okay, it was a great video. I agree with all of my colleagues, and I too live at Ford and Beck and within all the schools around there, and it does get backed up. So if you can get another light in their left turn lane, that might help for now. I know there's a drain we have to, I know it's going to be expensive because of the drain.
Well, I mean, it's already signalized, so, I mean, there's, infrastructure's there. If, if MDOT would let us hang another light or change one, we can try, or we can ask at least.
Because the problem is when you're trying to make a left, people run through. And it's red, and you can't make a left. And, and so it does, it gets gridlocked pretty bad, especially, and I know it's just during school hours, but we've got the charter and rush hour. We have the charter school, we have the high school, we have so many. And then now, you know, we have the assisted living homes going up, so it's a pretty busy place.
Well, you, you all know that the intersection is very limited space-wise too. I mean, you have the drain, the recording studio is right on the road. You know, it's, it's tough in, in two spots to get a lot in there, so work with what we have, sure. So, so yeah, I mean, that's great feedback, and I'm glad we, we got to hear, I got to hear from you all. I will look into a potential.
Yes, Summer.
Sorry, I had one more question about the local roads program. Are we still getting a lot of subdivisions and homeowners associations applying for that?
I would say it's a lot, yeah. We are pretty much full through '26. And full for one year is, I mean, full to me is 15 subdivisions, but we're doing more than that typically. A lot of them are repeat customers, which I think is great. They're seeing the value in it. We're doing, we're doing what we can to encourage people that haven't participated to participate. You know, e- even when folks call that don't have an HOA, we say, listen, we can take 2,500 bucks from you and, or in your neighbors and do $50,000 worth of work right in front of your house. And we've had a couple have done that now. So it's, it's, that's a great program too. I mean, I think it's sort of the, the, not forgotten, but I mean, it's, you know, you don't see it unless you live there, but man, has it worked well. I mean, we used to do, sorry, Michael, we used to do the, occasionally do the special assessment where, you know, the subdivision's paying ultimately over 100% of the cost because of fees and whatnot. And now, you know, they're paying no more than 20%. And they don't have to do anything except apply and ask us to fix it. So, yeah, it's been great. We hope it keeps going. We were just talking today, actually, potentially, because we had someone from Sunflower ask, which was ironic, about more or larger projects. And we were thinking, because '26 is full, but it's slowing a bit as the rate we're getting the applications. We were thinking about, and I apologize, Dave, I hadn't even had a chance to mention this to you yet, but we were thinking about in, starting in later years of removing the lid, removing the cap on project size. So if someone wanted a $500,000 project and they had 20% of that, we'd say, yeah, let's do it. If we only have 10, 11 subs and we have the budget, then might as well, you know, help them out while we can.
Thank you. I know when we created the, the Roads Improvement Plan, the thought was that once you got closer to year 10, the applications would start slowing down because so many people would take advantage, so thank you.
Yeah, I, I hope it doesn't, we'll see.
I'd like to add on to that. The, the list, do you have the list of the next two years or three years of the subdivisions? That you could share with us, doesn't have to be right now, but.
I do, yeah.
And then I have been, I think we talked about it last time, concerned about Sunflower, that they're not, like percentage-wise for the space, they're not doing the projects that they need to do there. And I don't, I didn't totally understand why, like maybe it's that their projects are too big and they don't feel they can apply, or do they not want to have the money to match or?
I get the impression it's both of those things. Although, like I said, the, I think he's a newer HOA member possibly reached out to us about having larger projects, which again, I was like, okay, I mean, do one period and we can talk. But, you know, I don't get, I don't get the opportunity to call people who don't participate and ask them why, you know.
Yeah, I just think this one is important because they were kind of the poster child for doing it since their roads had deteriorated so badly. And I don't want to get 10 years into the program and realize that, you know, we have to spend the last 10 years just doing Sunflower or something like that. My thought, yeah, please add anything.
Yeah, one thing I wanted to add on that is, you know, we worked really hard with representative Puri to secure funding for ASR roads. And we were able to secure that funding in the budget last year. I know there's been an analysis of ASR in Canton Township. I know at some point we'll probably see that analysis. My gut tells me most of that ASR is going to be on residential streets and.
All we looked at.
It's all we looked at. So I guess, if I can make a philosophical statement, we've been doing this small piecemeal residential roads program that has both a cap, also has a funding requirement from these communities. If, I guess at some point, I think we should look at what is the best, highest and best use of the funds that we have out of the Roads Millage, plus what we've secured by the governor, apply that to the areas that need that. And if that means we go back and reimburse neighborhood subdivisions who had matched 10, 15, 20, 40, up to $40,000 in the past, we do that to make them whole. I'm imagining a number of subdivisions, I'm thinking Glengarry in particular. I know Stonegate has spent money on ASR roads that would have qualified. But to that end, if we've got large obligations standing out there, we're talking about Swanmere, Lambeth, that kind of stuff, other Glengarry, there were what's left of Stonegate, the stuff we know is out there. If, if, you know, part of the reason we had a Roads Millage was to fix a dysfunctional system. If there's a, if there's a less than optimal functioning system inside of our Roads Millage, I would recommend that we apply the same philosophy of the Roads Millage to the allocation of Roads Millage funds to make sure that we can actually fix the best amount of roads in the most efficient way possible, and we're not held hostage by previous decisions that we've made.
And the, my, and I agree with that. And last comment would be that these bigger subdivisions like Glengarry and Sunflower are providing a good portion of the funds for the millage. And so I'd hate for them not to get their fair share. And so I'd hate for them not to get their fair share of fixing their roads in that portion of the village. So, just my thought.
Well, as was mentioned, we were anticipating this $5 million funds from the state. And that, there's decisions that have to be made and how we use that. We certainly have more than $5 million worth of ASR specific road improvements needed. I would, I would estimate Sunflower alone probably has almost $3 million on its own. Looking at, like you said, Swanmere and the associated courts and, you know, those roads are, there's no saving any part of it. So, yeah, it's, there's decisions to be made. I mean, we continue to be in the advantageous position of having to figure out how to spend money, which is nice. So, yeah, that's, we do the bidding. I mean, however you guys like to spend it, we'll go out there and spend it, so.
We'll be coming back to you with, because we, they, we got a report back. We have questions about that report and we're asking for more information, dollars, a better prioritization scheme. And we'll be coming to you with that and how we, how we proceed.
Yeah, they gave us about eight different subs or phases of subs.
Seven or eight, yeah.
Seven or eight?
Yeah.
That were, they found to be potentially ASR affected concrete roads. We only looked at roads. We didn't, some, some of the subdivisions have asphalt roads and concrete curbs, but, you know, we didn't, we didn't send them into those, just the ones that are actual concrete roads.
Questions or, okay. Well, thank you so much. We appreciate.
Thank you.
And we really enjoyed the video. Yes, thank you very much. Okay, if we could please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you so much. All right, may I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Ma'am supervisor, I'm, sorry, madam chair. I move that the board adopt the agenda with the addition of agenda item A, resolution authorizing solid waste fee for property tax bill. And add on B, consideration of board action on attorney's recommendation regarding pending litigation. Charter Township of Canton v. IMAC Properties LLC, Daniel McCloslin and Robert McCloslin.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Next approval of the minutes for October 17th and 24th and for November 1st.
So moved.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Next is public comment on agenda, agenda items only. Do we have any public comments on agenda items only? Any public comments? Any public comments? It doesn't look like it, so we. Okay, next we will go into payment of the bills, so I motion that we pay the bills.
I'll support that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Now we're going to the consent calendar.
Ma'am Chair, I move that the board adopt the consent calendar as presented. Item C1, consider approval of payment of the annual software license fees to Carryworks for the On Base Document Management System. C2, consider approval of application for MLCC special liquor licenses. Item C3, consider approving an increase to the blanket purchase order issued to Airgas Great Lakes. C4, consider request to increase blanket purchase order for PSD, that's Public Safety Division, I believe, or Police Services Division, IT Systems Technological Support. Item C5, consider request to increase blanket purchase order for police uniforms. And finally, item C6, consider resolution authorizing board review to schedule alternate July and December board of review meetings.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, next is G A on, on the calendar. A resolution authorizing solid waste fee for property tax bills.
Ma'am Chair, I move to approve the treasurer to place a $195 solid waste fee on the property tax bill mailed on December 1, 2023.
Support.
After listening to residents' calls for consistency in quality on our waste removal services, the township has put the contract out for bid. The performance of the existing vendor has been the number one concern of residents for the past few years. The contract expires in 2024 and a vendor will be selected that can be, that can deliver professional services that our professional community expects. Of the three bids received November 2, 2023, all are more than the existing expenses with the current rate at 165. Regardless of which vendor is selected next year, the solid waste fee requires raising to ensure the health of the fund. Staff has calculated financial impact of this service and is recommending approval, approval of a $30 increase in the solid waste fee to $195. Winter tax bills must be printed this week and the rate submitted to the county treasurer by next Tuesday in order to comply with the state law. Comments or questions?
I, I just have a quick question. So it's my understanding we have three bids in and we will be having a study session on the bids that came in. Is the intent to have those, that study session this year or in next year in 2024?
Madam Chair, yeah. We plan to have it this year for a couple reasons. One is we need to give the selected vendor time to get equipment and get ready to service us when it comes next summer. So we want to give as much lead time as possible to the, to the successful vendor. Also, we don't really want to wait. We want to get going because we are having a lot of problems with the current vendor. So we want to make sure they're on notice that we are making a change.
Is, did the current vendor submit a bid?
The current vendor did submit a bid.
They did?
They did.
And are they the lowest bidder?
At this point, no.
Okay, all right. I, I would just point out to the board, I would hope that we do not consider paying more money for the same service that we are currently getting there. I would hope that we have a successful bid review process and we look to somebody else.
Yeah, the process for the board, you get an opportunity, we're going to bring each vendor in and they'll present to you, make their case. And then you'll have an opportunity to understand what they're each bringing to the table. Some are very similar, but there are some, some, each one has a unique perspective on what to do in Canton. So we'll have a chance to hear what they have to say.
So all three will be coming?
All three will get an opportunity to present.
Perfect, and we'll be able to hear and answer questions.
I would just add that it's not surprising to me that it came to this. I mean, the world has changed since we last signed up a service provider. And we know the struggles that have occurred in this community. And I believe in all industries, people finding workers, good workers, to do the service, perform the service. So actually, I'm surprised that it's at this level that we only have to go this high financially. So, yeah, I'm for the motion.
Summer?
I'm just confirming the current contract ends in, at the end of 2024?
End of July, of 2024, yeah.
Yeah, I, I was telling Clerk Segress, I remember when we considered the GFL contract back seven years ago when I was first elected to the board. And I believe we increased the fees at that time around $150 for residents. I think the way, as Trustee Steineman mentioned, the way the world is now and everything increasing and fees going up. And the cost of paying employees has drastically increased since 2016. It makes sense that there is a fee. I'm glad that it's not as high as it was when we first came into office, that it is $30. But, I mean, I hope GFL knows that they, if they want to keep service in a community, they need to deliver better service and do what they promised to residents. I don't know if that will help them in Canton, but if they are doing business in other communities, I hope they will take that under advisement.
So just to clarify, this is a fee that is on winter tax bills only, right?
Yes, yes, it is only on the.
And it's a flat fee.
Yes, all residents will pay the same fee.
Okay, yeah, and I echo what Trustee Foster said about our current provider because it's been disappointing, the service level we've received.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All right, G B. Consider, consideration of the board action on attorney recommendation regarding pending litigation, Charter Township of Canton versus IMAC Properties LLC, Daniel McCloslin and Robert McCloslin.
Ma'am Chair, I move to approve the attorney settlement recommendation in the case of Charter Township of Canton v. IMAC Properties LLC, Daniel McCloslin, Robert McCloslin, and authorize the township supervisor to sign all the necessary documents to effectuate the recommendation.
Support. The board met in closed session to discuss the case of Charter Township of Canton versus IMAC Properties LLC, Daniel McCloslin and Robert McCloslin. Any questions? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Right, G1, request approval to contract with new security systems support vendor.
Ma'am Chair, I move to approve the contract and purchase order in 2024 for the sole use of services, components and systems as provided by GSI Incorporated of Troy, Michigan in support of township's security systems for a period of five years.
Support.
The facilities, public safety and ITI services department have been jointly working to identify a replacement security system contractor who can provide improved service along with a state of the art security system, components and solutions. The support contract with the township's current support vendor expires mid-2023, prompting the three primary departments to work together to publish a request for proposal seeking a replacement. The purpose of this request for proposal was to aid in identifying a company that not only would support existing systems, but would also replace our end of life systems with improved and more capable replacement systems. Any questions? Want to make any comments?
From MSD, we don't really have any comments other than John Solian is here also answering questions. But I know this was a team effort among the three departments, so.
No questions?
I want to say that it's, it was really a collaborative effort between IT PD and MSD working on this to make sure that we laid a foundation for a more robust system that will allow us to be more proactive in the way we position security for the township. Not just, you know, the ones that is visible, but also for access control.
Even?
Thank you. Well, is this access to, what, what security is this providing?
So this covers, the support service, this covers both access control for the doors. It covers surveillance for the cameras at all the township properties. And I believe it also, and panic buttons too. So overall, you know, support for that.
Well, is it supporting existing ones or are we deploying all new?
It's supporting existing one with a view of a new. We recognize that the existing one has its own limitations. And also, I would like to point out, really, this is crucial, that we currently have close to about 100 and, less than 110 of the surveillance cameras that we've already been notified by, based on federal government recommendation, that those should never be anymore in any government office. But we have those and we, we have to find a way to retire them and provide something else because of obvious concerns of Chinese interference. So we needed a company that can, you know, support that for now while we, you know, find our way out of it. Because it's going to take some really, some major financial engineering to be able to do so.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Two, consider approval of purchase order to Partners in Architecture PLC for the architectural design, bid documents, engineering and owner's representation for the Western Wayne Building.
Ma'am Chair, I move to approve the award for architectural design, engineering bid documents and owner's representation for the Western Wayne Building renovations in an amount not to exceed $152,000 to Partners in Architecture PLC upon confirmation of the date of the award issued by the state of Michigan and the attached budget amendment.
Support.
Canton Township is interested in moving forward with the renovation to the vacant Western Wayne Building located at 44582 Geddes Road to allow other community service organizations like Growth Works to occupy the premises. These services will enhance the quality of life for many Canton residents and continue to offer services that are currently being offered in other areas of the township. Renovation to the building will be capped at $2 million and are the result of allocations by the state of Michigan. For this project, it's the recommendation of the administration to utilize the township's master service agreement with Partners in Architecture, PLC, PIA, to provide services for necessary architectural and engineering services to define, design and implement the desired improvements as summarized in the attached proposal in the amount not to exceed $152,000. David, do you have any, anything you want to say?
I don't have anything else to add to.
Uh, any comments or questions?
No questions. I'll just, you know, make a statement. I think, you know, Partners in Architecture are fantastic partner for the township. They've been super helpful in everything from the renovation of the factory building with regards to the Village Square project, assisting in design and implementation, I think, for the Zibwez active place structure. They obviously helped us build Fire Station Number Two. They're looking, they're looking at Fire Station Number Four. Super excited that they'll be, will be having them work on the architectural design for the Western Wayne Building that has, has kind of languished for a number of years. And again, just want to express gratitude to Representative Puri for helping secure funding for that building. Not only was that building a potential to slip into kind of blight, not only was it an unused township property, us being, securing the funding to renovate it, out of the state appropriations will, I mean, it helps us increase an asset and get a vacant building into use, which is, I think, good for the, good for the community on so many levels.
Right?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. This building is not only thought of being for the use of Growth Works, but for, for the other social service organizations, right?
Yeah, that's what was in the, yep, summary, yes.
Yeah. The 152,000 that we're looking to approve tonight, is that coming out of the $2 million of the state appropriation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, I, I too want to express my gratefulness to. All right, I, I too want to express my gratefulness to Representative Pori for his help on this.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Go on to G3, consider purchase of equipment to uplift two Dodge Durangos for the Police Department.
Ma'am Chair, I move to approve the purchase of equipment to outfit two 2023 Dodge Durangos for the Canton Police Department from Cruisers Incorporated at 5977 Brighton Pines Court, Howell, Michigan, 48843, in the amount of $20,278,070. Funding will come from the subject account for Police Capital Outlay Machinery and Equipment.
Uh, port.
Okay. There's a need to purchase the necessary equipment to outfit two 2023 Dodge Durangos that were purchased for the Police Department in October of 2023. Fleet Services obtained a quote from Cruisers, Inc., the preference vendor of such equipment in the amount of $20,278,70. This quote includes the same type of sirens, lights, push bumpers, prisoner pardons, and mounting brackets already being used by the Police Department in the current patrol Ford Explorers, but it's made to fit the Dodge Durango. To avoid high shipping costs, an equipment will be picked from Cruiser, Inc. by Fleet employees. Do you have, does MSD, David, do you have any comments?
No, just that, that we're, we're used to seeing a blue oval on our vehicles, but so this, we had an opportunity to get these two Durangos, and they do fit the needs of the Police Department. So it's a little bit different outfit, just because they're different vehicles, but we'll get them ready to go for the Police Department. Comments too?
Yeah, thank you. The equipment that goes into these vehicles, very specific, and some of the things that we have to ensure is the safety and care and custody of the prisoner, that's one issue, then all the, the lights, and all the things that alarmed the citizens where we're going to and from, so.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. G4, consider approval of purchase order to Sheena Roofing from removal and replacement of the Village Theater Area D roof.
Ma'am Chair, I move to approve a contract and a purchase order to Sheena Roofing and metal, and sheet metal in the amount of $107,661 to replace the flat roof over Area D at the Village Theater.
Support.
During 2023, the Village Theater roof, Area D, above the theater stage, experienced roof failure, resulting in water penetrating the building. The roof was installed in 2004 and was approaching 20 years old with a life expectancy of 20 to 25 years. MSD Facilities has funding available to replace the failed section above the stage and is scheduled to replace the remaining sections in 2026 under our five-year CIP program. Any comments from the director?
Thank you, I don't, I don't have any additional comments, other than John Zalines is here to answer any more detailed questions we might have.
Questions?
Just, what kind of roof is it?
We'll be going with our standard spec of a 25-year Firestone Flat Rubber Roof. When we write this, the specs, it's pretty standard throughout most of the township properties. We have consistency with knowledge of maintenance repairs, and we do have that 25-year lifetime warranty on them as well.
Did the previous one have 25 years on it?
No, I don't think it did. I think it, it was about a 15-year one. It wasn't the Firestone material. It is a little bit older, of a designed build, so we're now trying to standardize that throughout the whole township buildings. And we did partner with a RTA roofing consultants, so they will be on-site during the whole construction period, they'll be taking photos, and they'll make sure it's adhered properly to have the warranty intact for us, and they'll have closeout documents to prove that for us.
Thanks, John.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Five. Consider approval of purchase order to Chromoline Contracting for window caulking and waterproofing at the Administration Building.
Ma'am Chair, I move to approve the contract and approve a purchase order to Chromoline Contracting at 603 Estrada Drive, Belleville, Michigan, 481111, in the amount of $46,499 plus a 10% contingency of $4,649, making the total $51,148.
Support.
During the rain occurrences, the Administration Building experienced window sill leaks in various locations. In some locations throughout the Administration Building, rainwater was, had caused damage to ceiling tiles, soft links, and carpets. MSD Facility is recommending removal and replacement of failed window sealants along with the rust as a preventative maintenance procedure. Want to say anything?
I also don't have anything else to add, other than John, John Zalines is here to answer any questions.
Great. Any questions?
Just one thing to add, sorry, you can go ahead first. Would you like to go ahead first, before I made one comment? Sorry. Would you like to go ahead first, before I make a comment? Just, I wanted to throw in there that we did have various companies come through to identify that was window sill leaks. We had roof companies in here, we had masonry, we had EFIS, so it was quite the process to narrow it down specifically through that. We did have some folks climb in the ceiling and the soffit too, to make sure we found the, the exact locations. And it was in multiple locations as well, so we did do diligence to cover all the bases and not just assume it was a window sill leak. So this is, this is a good thing, and we are able to get quite a bit of windows done over, I think we have just about 1,100 window seals throughout the whole township building, and this will cover pretty much all the ones that have failed.
No, I was just going to say, I was recently at Plymouth High School, and because of their proximity to the creek, they had a substantial amount of water enter in a lot of the classrooms, a lot of damage, and so I was just grateful that our kind of lesson over the last couple of year, a couple of months, and with the, with the excessive rain and flooding and things like that, is, you know, what we have to do is, is essentially seal the windows, which is not nearly as much as some of the businesses along Ford Road have had to do, and then, like I said, Plymouth High School, which had a substantial amount of damage due to water coming in to the actual classrooms themselves, and ruining some of the carpet and the walls and things like that. So just grateful right now that this is the solution.
Thank you.
I'll just say, John, thank you so much, because I know our, our office had some water in that, so you and yourself are really good about coming in and trying to figure out where that leak is, and, and to make sure we don't want any mold growing, so we appreciate all of your hard work that you guys do.
Thank you very much.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. G6, consider approval of barn and woodwork restoration at the Preservation Park.
Ma'am Chair, I move to approve the contract and approve a purchase order to Allied Building Services at 1801 Howard Street, Detroit, Michigan, 48216, in the amount of $20,000.
Support.
You. The historic site at Preservation Park has multiple buildings that need maintenance and repair. To preserve the integrity of our historic buildings, this project will include replacement of deteriorated wood, sidings, and decking, straightening and securing the corn barn and handrail, refinishing and securing. The project's scope included, included input from the Historical Society and MSD Facilities to capture safety and infrastructure repair needs.
I have nothing to add, again, John is here to answer any questions.
Just one thing to add, I know we're working with the Leisure Service Department as well. It sounds like there is some grant dollars that are also available. During the interview process to the bidders that we had, we did tell them there could be a Phase Two to add work scope to this, so we did get additional cost that we could do more work for this site, so I expect another RBA coming to expand the work that we will be doing there in the future.
Questions? I know you have been very mindful about those buildings, and I do appreciate that, because we do want to maintain the, some of them, I was surprised, looking at the pictures of some of them, how they've deteriorated.
Hopefully we capture it before, you know, you have to do a full replacement, which I think we're in time to do that, so we'll, we'll continue to monitor those and take care of as much as we possibly can.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. G7, consider approval of iPad and accessory purchase.
Ma'am Chair, I move to waive the purchasing policy, approve the purchase of 19 iPads and accessories for a total amount of $14,428,41.
Support.
Thank you. To enhance the service delivery and efficiency input and track routine inspections, the Leisure Services and Community Development Department seeks approval to purchase 19 iPads with cases and three charging stations for the total cost of $14,428,41. The iPad will be utilized in several facilities and divisions, including parks, Summit on the Park, and recreations. These iPads will assist park staff in completing equipment and playground inspections in the field, and the summit staff to track facility counts to complete incident reports. In addition to all these tasks, recreation staff will also utilize iPad to communicate with participants of therapeutic recreation more effectively, as well as many other programs, events in the services. Additionally, Leisure Service is requesting to waive the purchase policy as Verizon Wireless offers government prices to the downship, ensuring that we get the lowest cost for these items without having to go back for bid. Any, make any thing to say?
Nothing to add, other than long overdue, and this is really going to enhance our staff's efficiency with a lot of, a lot of systems.
Any questions or comments? Kate?
Yeah, I'm excited about these. I am looking forward to seeing you do some innovative things with them, so I hope that will happen. I am especially thrilled that you're going to be using them for communication purposes with therapeutic recreation participants, if they need it. Because I've, I've seen how these can be used to facilitate communication, and I think that will be just, it will really enhance the program, so thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. G8, consider authorization to purchase new cardio and strength training equipment.
Ma'am Chair, I move to approve the 2023 purchase of cardio equipment and hack squat in 2024, order of strength training equipment as presented.
Support.
Thank you. Requests for proposal were solicited in October 2023 for new cardio and strength equipment for the Summit on the Park Fitness Center. From this, five fitness equipment providers submitted bids. We recommend, we are recommending the replacement of a total of 15 pieces of equipment from two vendors, Direct Fitness Solution and All Pro Fitness Things. Additionally, both vendors are offering trade-in on current equipment. The Summit on the Park is requesting to order and purchase nine pieces of cardio equipment and one hack squat using 2023 capital dollars, and five pieces of strength training equipment are budgeted in 2024. However, due to lead time, will be, it will be ordered in 2023, but paid and delivered in 2024. Do you have anything to add?
Think that pretty thoroughly covers it, but I'm happy to answer any questions, should you have them.
Questions or comments? Kate?
The nine pieces of cardio equipment that you're using the 2023 capital dollars for, will they be delivered in 2023?
Yes, we anticipate they will be.
So will they be delivered by the time the summit reopens?
The summit is open right now, but the pool?
Yeah, by the time the pool reopens.
I'm not sure on the exact delivery date, but I know they're anticipating this order.
Okay, just wondering, because I know we have some agreements with other facilities while the pools close, so I'm hoping that some people will be coming back, and if we have new equipment, that might be enticing also.
Correct, yeah, and, and we currently have this equipment in place, it's just replacement with newer pieces, so.
Right.
And it won't require any closure time or anything, they'll do that quickly.
That's good.
Even?
No, I just want to make a comment, I appreciate you keeping the equipment up to date, you and your team. You know, it's, it's nice to be on something that you consider stable and well-working when you're trying to work out, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. G9, consider approval of a resolution to authorize a Cadet Explorer program within the Fire Department.
Ma'am Chair, I move that the following resolution be adopted. Whereas Charter Township of Canton recognizes the importance of a properly-staffed professional fire department for the well-being of residents and visitors to our community, and whereas it is further recognized that a Cadet Explorer program will help to assure the availability of competent, well-trained individuals to consider the future Fire Department vacancies, now therefore be it resolved. The Board of Trustees, the Charter Township of Canton approves the request to authorize the Director of Fire Services to establish and maintain a Cadet Explorer program within the Fire Department comprised of individuals from 16 through 17 years of age.
Support.
Thank you. The Canton Fire Department is requesting approval of a resolution to authorize a Director of Fire Services to establish and maintain a Cadet Explorer program within the Fire Department. This program would help to assure the availability of competent, well-trained individuals to consider for future Fire Department vacancies. Summer?
I just want to say that this sounds like a great program, and I think it's great to get kids when they're young and involved in wanting to serve communities, so I think this sounds like a great program.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. 10, consider request to award the Shelter Pavilion Bid to Carpentry Concepts and Ceilings LLC.
Ma'am Chair, I move to approve awarding the bid to build a shelter pavilion at the gun range to Carpentry Concepts and Ceilings LLC in the amount of $21,000.
Port.
Thank you. The Police Department is requesting to award a bid to Carpentry Concepts and Ceilings LLC in the amount of $21,000 for the construction of a shelter pavilion at the department's gun range. Do you have any, any comments?
Sure. First of all, I'd like to thank MSD specifically, John there.
We, uh, had three bids come through and they were way over what we had budgeted and he had, um, worked with a company that we're very fond of here in a township and to bring us within budget and still build a structure to keep our folks, um, you know, we train throughout all elements throughout the winter and this will be the first time we really protected them while they're waiting their turn. And especially as we're doing more, um, de-escalation type scenario exercises outside. Um, it's important, at least while there's downtime, uh, to be protected from the weather, so.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. B11. Establish Board of Trustees' meeting dates for 2024 and consider closing the Canton Township Administration Building on July 5th, 2024.
Madam Chair, I move to establish the Canton Township Board of Trustees' meeting schedule for the year 2024 as follows. The Township Board shall meet on the first, second, third, fourth, and fifth Tuesdays of each month in regular session, excluding February 27, June 18, August 6, September 24, and November 5. And to approve the closure of the Administration Building on July 5th, 2024, the first, third, and fifth Tuesdays, the Township Board shall meet in a work or study session at 6:00 PM, uh, and all other meetings shall be at 7:00 PM. Meetings are normally held in the Board of, uh, Trustees' Meeting Room on the first floor of the Charter Township of Canton Administration Building at 11:50 at Canton Center South, Canton, Michigan. Meetings may be canceled based on the needs of the township. All adjustments to the schedule, uh, to be posted individually on the Canton website, as well as posted on the announcement boards at the Township Administration Building.
Support.
Thank you. In accordance with the Opening, Open Meetings Act and the Charter Township Act, the Township Board of Trustees is required to establish and post a schedule of board meetings for the calendar year. Additionally, in previous years, the township has closed around July 4th holiday to allow employees to rest and recharge. The township is already closed on Thursday, July 4th. It's being proposed to close the Administration Building on Friday, July 5th and grant employees one extra PTO day that will be required to be used on July 5th. Those who are unable to take time off due to the nature of their position will be given an alternate day off or credited with one day of PTO to be used in accordance with the administrative guidelines, which will be provided to employees should the Board approve this RBA. Are there, did you wanna make a, any?
Um, just the, the, the dates that we've exempted from our regular schedule are election dates and also the, um, date of the Michigan Municipal Treasures Association Convention and the date of the Michigan, um, of the, um, Michigan Association of Municipal Clerks, uh, Convention. So that both, uh, the treasurer and the, the clerk are, um, able to attend both of those um, and not have an, an absence from a board meeting. Um, this is pretty standard. We bring this forward every single year. Uh, what we have combined with this is the, um, Township closure on July 5th. Um, the, the Board has, has in the past done that through separate RBA, usually closer, uh, to the date. Um, it, it tends to be a day when, um, we aren't overly busy and, uh, the cost of keeping open sometimes is, is greater than, than the value we provide to, to the public. So, um, in this event, we thought we would be proactive in doing this and do the closure, um, a little bit around, you know, seven to eight, eight months in advance to allow people to make their plans accordingly.
Comments or questions?
That, that answered my question, cause I couldn't figure out that, um, June and Sep- September dates. I was like.
And I just think it's great that we're giving people, uh, like you said, uh, uh, Clerk Seegrist, uh, the opportunity to plan for a long weekend, um, which I think is important for employee morale.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Great. And now we have, uh, public comments. Are there any public comments? Please step to the podium.
George Miller. I'd like to know, uh, of the issue of the flooding and the last flood at Canton Center and Ford Road. I'd like to know if Myers can put a retention pond in there that the subdivisions have and some of the other commercial buildings. I, I've been around that and I don't think I see any. Possibly there's room there and that would ease some of the flooding. Secondly, I ask for, uh, Canton Center Road starting, or Belleville Road starting at Van Born and Van, um, and Belleville Road going east towards Hanon for that, the trash to be picked up. It hasn't been picked up in two or three years. I noticed they had a trash deal, uh, detail from the Plymouth Court out there doing Michigan Avenue. Maybe they'll get to that one day over there on Van Born. Uh, the guard rail at Palmer and Sheldon, it's eventually, nobody's addressed it for the last year. It fell in the ditch. So if somebody slides off the road, they just go in the ditch and if it happens to be six foot of water and it's about 10 foot deep, they'll probably drown. Next thing is, I'd like to address is, uh, I'd like to know some of the fences, why they're not repaired. You drive through the township, maybe from the storm, they haven't had a chance to repair them. Also, um, at some of the ditches along Palmer Road, I'd like to know how some of that's progressing. You made the comment the county was gonna address that issue. I haven't seen any of that in the area. I get out and about every day around the township. I haven't seen any of their trucks or any of their graders out doing anything. Can you tell me when that will be on their schedule possibly? Waiting for a comment on that. You, they were supposed to look into it.
This is public comment right now.
Okay. I'd like, I'd like to know how it's progressing though. Also, I'd like to know, um, Hanon Road has been resurfaced, Lilylow Road has been resurfaced. Ditches haven't been cleaned over there, especially at Hanon Road. They had four vacuum trucks and they couldn't keep up with the last flooding and flooding their parking lot with Ford Parks or cars or some of their Broncos and storage here before they sell them. They've come pretty close to getting, flooding those vehicles. So I'd like to know what can be done to have those ditches addressed and cleaned out. We've been asking for the last five or 10 years, not only this administration, but past. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Any other public comments? Any other public comments? Are there any other director comments? Or does the Board have any comments? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Real quick, I, I think, uh, you may have received, uh, communication from the supervisor on this, but just wanna thank you, the Board, the negotiating team, the, the Officers Union, the Command Officers Union, really been able to respond to finding great applicants, bring them into the organization. Thursday night last week at School Graff College, we had six recruits that we, uh, five of which we hired and one that we hired within the academy that really did a heck of a job, um, receiving all types of awards from academic to physical, to defensive tactics, to scholarship awards. So we're real proud of them and a lot of it started here probably three or four months ago. So thank you.
Happy, excited to see more joining us, yes. Great. Board comments?
Um, I will just say it is Native American History Month. Um, and it's also almost Thanksgiving, so happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Um, there is, just, um, I'm, just wanted to say, um, I'm grateful right now to, um, the FBI and Homeland Security. There's been a rash of, um, laced, um, letters being sent to election officials recently. Um, it has put some people in the hospital and other clerks and election officials around the country. They've stepped up their engagement. They have, um, been coordinating and working with election officials, communicating with the Secretary of State's office here in Michigan, but also all the counterparts all over the country, uh, and super grateful about that. Um, again, I think since, in particular 2020, um, people have, uh, hyper-focused on the refs in the elections process, the clerks and, um, the election officials. And, um, you know, it doesn't, it's not fun, uh, to be the target of that. Um, but super grateful for our federal partners and what they are doing to help reassure folks, educate us on that, how we handle the mail, uh, super grateful for that. Um, on top of that, um, Diwali was, um, on the 12th and Anahoot, the New Year, um, was today, so super exciting, uh, about that. A lot of activity in Canton Township. It's been great to see the overall township or community at large adopt that holiday and, um, support it, celebrate it, um, welcome the fireworks, um, that, that tend to be a little bit more concise um, than some of the other holidays that we have. Uh, but that's been really fun and really cool, um, to, to watch. I was able to participate on a couple of different levels at a couple of different of the, um, religious institutions this week and just really grateful that I live in a community like Canton that is, uh, diverse and, and has that offering. And my kids get to kind of grow up in that, um, environment. On, on top of that, um, one of our state representatives was elected mayor in Westland and so I congratulate former State Representative Kevin Coleman, who has now been sworn in as mayor of Westland. Um, what that does mean though, is that Canton will be having, um, some special elections as soon as the governor, uh, determines them. So, uh, that will get a little bit confusing for voters as we move to our first February 27th primary, but more than likely we'll have a lot of other elections notices going out to some folks who live in that section of Canton. Um, additionally, there will be some extra costs associated with those elections that we have not discussed. So, uh, I know you're used to me coming to you with my hat in my hand at this point, but that has not stopped and, um, it looks like it will not stop for the foreseeable future. So I look forward to, uh, future budget requests, uh, to the Township Board and, um, thank you.
So, Kate?
Yeah, I just, um, wanted to tell the Township Supervisor that we are thinking of her tonight and her family.
Uh, agree with that. Nothing to add to it. Just everybody stay safe out there. It's, it's darker in the evenings now, so drive carefully. Watch for pedestrians.
Yes, agree with everything everyone said and, um, stay safe for Thanksgiving that's coming up. Another celebration that we can spend time with our families. So with that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A good evening.